I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of April fifteenth, two thousand twenty. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In order to meet the required social distancing protocols, we must limit the number of people inside the chambers. Staff is assisting individuals who are present and wish to testify on items on today's agenda by ensuring that each person has signed in. Staff will direct you into the chambers based on what items you are testifying on and your position on that item. Please note that only one additional person will be allowed in the chambers at a time. Once you have testified, you should exit the chambers using the doors to the right of the Diaz, and then next individual would be directed in. It is recommended that once you testify, you leave the building. Based on estimations, we are staggering the times of various hearings over several hours. These times are identified in parentheses on the agenda. We are encouraging attendees to arrive no more than fifteen minutes before their scheduled hearing. Please note that an agenda item will not begin before the time posted. In the event that the allocated hearing times go quicker than estimated, there will be breaks in the hearing. If you've parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note that the April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty Planning Commission hearing is canceled due to the current health measures being taken by the City of Lincoln as a result of the COVID-19 virus. The agenda items scheduled to be heard on this date are postponed to the May thirteenth, two thousand twenty Planning Commission hearing. Please note the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items: 1.1B, Special Permit 20007, 1.5B, Waiver 20002, and 5.1, Special Permit 20008. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within fourteen days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held April first, two thousand twenty.
So move Campbell.
Second, Bechius.
Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Bechius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. I'm sorry, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section Three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Before I do that, I would like to announce that Commissioner Joy has declared a conflict of interest on items 1.1A and 1.1B on today's consent agenda and therefore is recusing herself from acting on these items. In addition, we received a request on behalf of the applicant for continued deferral of item 1.4, Change of Zone 20009, to the next scheduled Planning Commission hearing, which is anticipated for May thirteenth, two thousand twenty. This application should be removed from the consent agenda and considered for deferral. First item is item 1.1A, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 20003. To review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan to add the Antelope Tower Redevelopment Project, generally located between L Street on the north, K Street on the south, Antelope Valley Parkway on the west, and Twentieth Street on the east. And the associated special permit 20007 to allow for a permitted use to exceed the maximum permitted height in the B4 Business District, both on property generally located, again, between L Street on the north, K Street on the south, South Antelope Valley Parkway on the west, and Twentieth Street on the east. And this is final action on this special permit unless appealed to the City Council within fourteen days. Item 1.2 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 20004, to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan that adds the Hepburn Square Redevelopment Project, generally located at 2400 Q Street. Item 1.3 is Tax Amendment 20003, to amend Section 27.72 of Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter Twenty-seven, by allowing vehicle stacking in a drive-through lane in a front yard setback for the B1, B3, H1, H2, and H3 zoning districts, and repealing said section of the code as hitherto existing. Item 1.4 is being recommended to be removed from the consent agenda for deferral. Item 1.5A is Change of Zone 20010, from AG to AGR, on that portion of property located within Lincoln zoning jurisdiction generally located at South Forty-Sixth and Bennett Road. And the associated waiver 20002 to waive subdivision ordinance pertaining to Lincoln Municipal Code 26.33.140G regarding street frontage on property generally located at South Forty-Sixth Street and Bennett Road. Again, this is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within fourteen days. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Are there any exporte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site of any of these items?
Doesn't look like it.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please inform a staff member where you are waiting and state that request.
Doesn't look like there's any.
I would move that we pull 1.4 and defer it to May thirteenth.
Second, Bechius.
Jerry, do you want to call the vote on that one?
Yes, this is for the consent agenda, last the item 1.4.
This is for deferral of the...
Just deferral.
It's actually for the consent agenda. At this point, we're doing the consent agenda.
Made a motion for the deferral.
Oh.
The email said that we had to pull that before we voted on consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I guess it doesn't matter. We can certainly do that. So this is for the deferral of item 1.4.
Correct.
Okay. Motion made by Campbell, seconded by Bechius. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Bechius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Edgerton. Jerry?
Okay. This is for the consent agenda. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Bechius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Is there anyone wishing to testify on the change of zone request rather than waiting until the May thirteenth hearing? No. Okay. So I think we're ready to proceed to public hearing. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials to present to the Planning Commission members, please display them on the overhead display. If you want to leave copies for the record, please place them in the folder located on the podium. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. Then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public item hearing? Public hearing item?
Yes. Thank you. I will note for the public that is looking at the online agenda that under public hearing and administrative action, comprehensive plan conformance and related items, item 4.1A is actually item 4.1, and item 4.1B is item 4.2. I will be calling those separately. Thank you. Item 4.1 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 20005, to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, the City of Lincoln's Sixth Year Capital Improvements Program for fiscal year 2020, 2021 to 2025, 2026. Staff recommendation is in full or general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. David Carey with the Planning Department, here to represent the Planning Department on this item. This is for the Capital Improvement Program, the CIP. It is the requirement within the city charter that the Planning Commission provide a finding of conformity with the comprehensive plan for any capital project that is intended to be part of a budget. The requirement is that that finding needs to be held, needs to occur, excuse me, prior to any expenditure of funds on that capital project. So this is a very important and formal process that we take. We take it very seriously. So what I want to explain for the record here today, and then also be available for any questions that you might have, is to walk through kind of the overview of the process that we have taken to get to this point. Every two years as part of the budget process, what we do is the Planning Department is charged with creating the capital improvement program. We work with all the different departments to come up with their programs. At any given year, they can change, but it is a typical process that we take. We also work with the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee that is comprised of representation from the mayor, as well as the Director of the Planning Department, the Director of Finance, the Budget Officer from Finance, as well as the Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, and other staff in support of that committee. That group oversees development of the CIP. The result of that effort and process over months, the past few months, is what is before you today, which is the Capital Improvement Program for the next six years, the first two years of which will become the capital budget that goes along with the operating budget. And so that budget process is what begins in earnest over the summer and gets acted on by the end of August in anticipation of the next budget cycle. There definitely are possibilities of things changing by the time it gets into the budget, depending on both fiscal as well as priority adjustments along the way. However, those changes don't typically happen in great quantities, but I just want to kind of explain that that certainly could happen. So really, what happens today with your action is that a finding of conformity allows for the project to be part of the capital budget. It does not mean it has to stay in the capital budget. Things could still move around, but it gives the opportunity for those projects and programs to be in the capital budget. So that is the best way to think about this. This is broken out by department. You see within the project descriptions, you see the level of priority that's been given to those projects within those programs in those departments. You see some budget outcomes that are identified that help identify why we're doing the project. And most importantly for today's action, you see the staff's interpretation of the level of conformity with the comprehensive plan. You will notice that all of these projects are basically found either in conformance or generally conforms with the plan. That's because we do a very good job of making sure we work with our different departments so that they're not bringing forward projects that do not comply with the plan. It is technically possible that you could have a project that ends up in the capital budget that does not conform with the plan, but it would still be given a finding by yourselves even if it did not have been in conformance of the plan. We don't have any of those projects in this program, which is a good thing, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear that's possible. You did get briefed on this two weeks ago, so you have seen more of the details, but certainly I am available, Paul's available, to answer any questions that you might have on this. And with that, I would just explain that, again, after this finding today, this will be sent back to that Capital Improvement Advisory Committee where the actual budget will be put together, and then that budget cycle and process will take place over the summer. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. If I'm hearing you right, David, due to the virus situation and our potential change of sales tax revenue, what you are saying is that even if we approve all of these, some of them that are on the schedule may not get done due to budget restrictions.
Yeah, and obviously these are extraordinary times. We have an impact on our economy that we have not seen, at least since it seems like the Depression anyways. So there's certainly the potential, real potential, that there's some adjustments that are going to have to be made based on what type of tax revenue receipts we're getting from sales tax. Another one that we haven't thought about a lot yet, but the gas tax is also going to be impacted because so much less travel is happening, and that certainly could have an impact on our transportation program. That is a very large chunk of the revenue that they receive. So the idea is, you know, the finding of conformity allows for the projects as represented to move forward. Certainly, given the situation we're in, there probably will be either decreases in the level of funding that's available so that less might have to happen, at least in the next year. The hope is that we can rebound and things look kind of like what they are represented as in this proposed CIP. But yes, that is a good example of something that might have to change, at least for the near term.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
Oh, you decide if you have to take a project out of the queue.
So that'd be part of the budget process and decision-making. So that ends up going through the mayor's office. The mayor will produce the mayor's budget and provide that to the City Council, and then the City Council will go through their typical process for developing the budget. And then priorities will have to be established as to what is fully funded or less funded or happens in the two years or has to be bumped out. So that becomes a budget decision. Yep.
I would assume some of that decision-making also will depend on if there's federal funds tied to it versus just local funds?
Yeah, that's a good point to be made. A lot of the projects in here are dependent on federal funding or other outside funding, outside the city and outside the county for that matter. So it is depending if we get a grant and then providing that local match or vice versa. We didn't get the grant, and then obviously we wouldn't have the project move forward. So as you look through this, there are quite a few different programs and projects that are dependent on those decisions. And again, we're deciding on the fact that the level of conformity with the comprehensive plan, not necessarily exactly when this is going to happen or not happen, but the idea is to try to follow this as much as possible.
Is Paul going to walk us through any more after your presentation, or is this our opportunity to ask some questions?
I think this is it, right here. When Paul's available, they answer questions, too.
Okay, perfect. So one question I did have was in regards to the public safety, the aerial ladders and replacement engine. I know a couple of years ago, when we had gone through this process, we were looking at some apparatus that were pretty old, needing replacement, not doing well. I know there had been some budget adjustments in the city operating budget since that point in time, but I also wanted to just get a clarification as to the proposed changes to the ladders and the engines, as to where that would put the entire fleet at the end of that six years, if that would be a status quo situation at the end of that six years, or if we would be moving in the direction of getting those vehicles to a newer average age.
Good question. So through our process, we obviously have had a lot of discussions with LFR, and it's clear that the needs definitely outpaced the ability to fund the projects. That is not a new condition, but it's not one that we necessarily like to be in. As far as the ladders and engines, that is one of the higher priorities of the fire department, to try to find funding to get those replacements happening. At this time, there is not a revenue stream to fund all of those needs. Part of that conversation was prioritizing the, you'll notice in the program, the station modification repairs with a significant level of effort for funding, actually in the second year, so in the budget cycle. That was identified as the number one priority for the fire department, and very clearly, though, that not saying that the arials and engines didn't need to be replaced on a regular cycle, but having to pick and choose where the available money could go was definitely the station modification and repairs as being much more of a high need and more immediately. Having said that, there's going to need to be ongoing conversations about finding additional funding for public safety in general, but in this case, the fire department's needs, and included in that will be the vehicles that need to be replaced. So that's going to have to be an ongoing conversation. We don't have those decisions right now, so we can't include that funding in the program right now. But we did identify those needs, and you'll see that they're in the out years. They're in the years three through six, which means they won't be showing up in the next budget, but we need to figure out how we're going to fund those needs. So that's where that stands in that conversation.
Okay, okay. And do you know at the end of those six years, let's say, that our budgeting is actually meeting the CIP that we have in front of us, would that be a status quo, or would we be slightly moving in the right direction in terms of reducing an average age of ladders and engines?
I think if we were, to make sure I'm answering the question the right way, I think if we were to meet the needs that are identified in the out years with another funding source, so in the past, we created that quarter cent sales tax for public safety and got a lot of work done, a lot of new stations built. If something like that were to happen in the future, and we were able to get a lot of those engines and aerial trucks replaced, as identified in this six-year program, that we would be in a much better position than we are today, and we will start to chip into that. I think the best way to put it, though, would be like we'd be getting back to where we would ideally like to be on a regular basis instead of be ahead of the curve.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then the only other question that I had was on one of the items for LTU. Oh, the sanitary sewer to serve the new high school at Seventieth and Saltillo. Was that project added specifically for the high school, or is that something? Do you know, David, if LTU was eyeing before the placement of the high school at that location?
That was already kind of in the works, in the plans.
I knew it was maybe looking at proceeding south of Rokeby there. I didn't know if LTU had already planned on taking it all the way down to Saltillo prior to the high school or not.
Yeah, so what happened in the recent past is that there was an area that was identified, not at the actual high school site, but to the, slightly to the east, that was identified as being able to be sewed by gravity. And so the sewer plan down there was basically expanded to allow for service of that land. And as you probably know, but not everybody might be aware, but just to the north of the new high school site, there already are approved plans and development happening. And so it's that sewer that already is available, and so just a local extension is all that's needed to serve the high school site. So that fits within our policies and with the plan, so that the physical improvement of the infrastructure there was already either in place or already planned for when the high school topic really came online.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
That's all.
Any further questions for Mr. Carey? Okay.
Thank you.
Testimony in support. Testimony in support. Not seeing anyone back there. Testimony in opposition? No one. Okay. Any questions you thought of between now, between then and now? Okay.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edgerton. Jerry?
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Bechius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I would then move that Comprehensive Plan Conformance 2005 be approved, showing full or general conformance with the plan.
Second, Joy.
Discussion.
I think that this, we've vetted and looked at all of the different possibilities. We've addressed some of the current issues that we have, and from a conformance standpoint, I think our role has been met. I will be supporting the motion.
Anyone else?
To answer Tom's question, if I'm not mistaken, the City Council with the mayor has funded money to replace eleven of the engines, and there's, I believe, two to three others yet to be replaced, and the aerial trucks would be the next target.
Good information. All right. I think we're ready, Jerry.
Okay, this is for finding of full or general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Bechius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, the next item is item 4.2, Miscellaneous 20001, Lincoln Metropolitan Planning Organization Proposal Review of a Draft Fiscal Year 2020 to 2023 Transportation Improvement Program for Conformance with the Current Lincoln Metropolitan Planning Organization Long Range Transportation Plan. Staff recommendation is for conformance with the long-range transportation plan. Are there any... Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any. Mr. Barnes?
Good afternoon. Paul Barnes with the Planning Department. Hopefully you can hear me okay. So before you, we have the Lincoln MPO's fiscal year 2021 to 2024 Transportation Improvement Program. I just wanted to note that this was also at the briefing on April first before this body. Your role in this process is to determine a conformity review with the long-range transportation plan. So it's similar to the CIP with the comp plan, but on the transportation side. This TIP is a four-year program of projects that we complete annually and bring forward to you. All projects in the TIP must be listed specifically or generally in the long-range transportation plan. And we have found in our review that all of those projects are in conformance with the long-range transportation plan. The TIP must also be fiscally constrained, so it's not a wish list or a needs list that's found in the long-range transportation plan. This document actually obligates dollars to the projects. I'd also like to note that the funding sources in the TIP are limited to specific project types. For example, FTA or Federal Transit Administration Funds are solely for transit projects. We do have a designated subcommittee of our technical review committee that reviews the project proposals that are to be included in the TIP. And the project selection process that we followed was the same as what was used for the 2040 LRTP update to determine that project listing. Agencies included in this TIP include Nebraska Department of Transportation, Lancaster County, City of Lincoln, Startran, Parks and Recreation, Natural Resources District, and Railroad Transportation Safety District. So we're asking for your comments here today and all of those comments will be attached to the TIP and then forwarded on to the state. After our meeting here today, the Transportation Improvement Program goes to our tech committee, which we're holding a meeting this Friday on. And then we'll forward that on to our officials committee, which is to be held May first. The officials committee, just so you're aware, is comprised of the chair and vice chair of each, the city council and the county board, and also the director of the Nebraska Department of Transportation. The mayor of Lincoln serves as the executive offer of that body, officer of that body. Our TIP is then forwarded and included in the state TIP for review throughout the summer and that's also a public review that's allowed. And if it's approved by Federal Highway and FTA, that would become official on October first, which is the 2021 federal fiscal year. So as I said, we did do a briefing of project specifics on April first. But if you have any questions related to that, I can, related to that, I can answer them now.
Questions for Paul?
Paul, in that, in this report, and I was just trying to find it, it, it still refers to the 14th and Warlock project being in process. Should that be changed? Is that really accurate anymore?
No, I believe the determination or language in there is on hold. The intent is that it is a regionally significant project, so regionally significant projects must be included in a TIP. At this time, we're looking at ways to maybe reduce costs, change some design and bring that, that amount of funding down. But if, if at some point it does go forward, we want to keep it in the TIP. It's just on hold at this point.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Testimony in support. Testimony in support. Testimony in opposition?
Good afternoon. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you in these brave new times. I want to talk a little bit about the funding set aside for the MPO. And I had concerns about this last year, which I'll discuss, but mainly I want to discuss my concerns this year. The project selection committee, also referred to as the program, programming and funding committee, met on February seventh, February fourteenth, and March sixth. The projects that were put forth by the city of Lincoln for this funding at the time were simply described as system maintenance and system optimization. Lancaster County asked for additional funding in the future years for 98 Street, Old Cheney to A, for 98 Street, A to O, for Fletcher Avenue to be paved and graded from 84th to 148th, and for funding to start the design of the Arbor Ridge Bro, Arbor Road Bridge, which is of course just east of 27th and, and Arbor. You may recall that with the Arbor Road Bridge, that the annexation was actually completed around the bridge. I have concerns as the county engineer, that if we're gonna put a roundabout at the location of the intersection and we already know that the bridge currently doesn't meet standards and will most likely need to be bigger in the future, why wouldn't we include the design of this bridge, which also in the future will have a trail on it? In addition, the Fletcher Avenue project was brought forward because Waverly has requested a truck route multiple times. I realize that not all of that is, is within the urban development area, but I do think nevertheless, we need to bring the project forward and work on it in the area that is developed. And later, of course, amend the LRTP and the comp plan. Maybe we should be amending the LRTP and the comp plan now. I have concerns. I have concerns because on the project selection for this funding, Lancaster County has a single vote, one vote. Somehow, our projects were not selected, even though we defined what our projects were when, when placed against the city of Lincoln's projects, simply stated, system optimization and system maintenance. I think this selection process has a problem. I believe it had a problem last year. I believe it had, it's had a problem for the 18 years that it's existed. Last year was the first year that Lancaster County got any funding in this system. And quite frankly, that was quite a fight. I was disappointed to come forward this year and have a similar situation where projects were not at least named. How do I lose against unnamed projects? When I asked that question in the meeting on two fourteen, I was told by Thomas Schaefer, "You shouldn't even be here." You shouldn't even be here. And I'd like to ask the commission, how would you like to be told that as a professional and as an executive? Or have your wife told that or your daughter in a professional setting? I'm only questioning, how is Lancaster County losing to unnamed projects? Last year, when we came forward for this funding, we asked for funding for 98 Street, Old Cheney to A, 98 Street, A to O, which you will see in the TIP. And we had an agreement to put Fletcher Avenue in the out years. This year, that agreement seems to have been forgotten about. Twenty years. It's been 20 years this funding has been available, but not for Lancaster County. What I'm asking for is that we come forward, that we come forward and we say that this money is really intended for projects along the development fringe. And it would benefit not only the county, but the city for projects like 98 Street, like Fletcher Avenue, perhaps even as far south as, as Saltillo with the new high school project, to be brought forward with this funding, so that when annexations do happen, the city is an annexing gravel roads. We've heard a lot about the county's substandard infrastructure that is given in really bad presence to the city. It would be my goal not to give those bad presents anymore. But it's really difficult when a major funding source like this has left out Lancaster County. The system needs to be changed. The system is broken for Lancaster County. I know that as I come forward, it will be said, hey, we don't really have time. We don't really have time to change the projects that have been asked for. I think it's interesting that now there is a list of projects, now there is a list of projects in the TIP. It's a little disturbing to me, I'm not gonna lie. I did state in the, in the February fourteenth, 2020 meeting, that I would come forward and that I would say I have a problem with the way that this is being conducted. This isn't all Lincoln's money. And I really want to ask the question, if not now, then when? If not me, then who? I should be here. I should be here. I should be here for the citizens of Lancaster County and I should be here as a woman engineer. And I will not be treated this way. And I will not allow Lancaster County to continue to be dismissed at these funding meetings. I will be here for Lancaster County. And Lancaster County has not received a fair share of the MPO funding for 20 years. If I'm gonna lose, I'd like to at least lose against real named projects. Thank you.
Questions for Pam?
Don't you have both the chair and, and the vice chair of the county board on the MPO?
On the officials committee, that is correct, Mr. Campbell.
So you do have more than one voice and vote in that group?
So where I'm speaking to is the voice and vote on the, the project selection committee.
Okay.
That's who I'm speaking to. I apologize if I was unclear.
Ms. Dingman, I, I, you, you referenced it, so I'll, I'll ask the question, although I'm not quite exactly sure that it's my prerogative to. Are you stating that you're having trouble working with city of Lincoln employees because of your gender?
I think that's a distinct possibility. It's interesting to be dismissed in meetings. There's not a lot of other conclusions that could be drawn from "you shouldn't even be here."
And you think that those relate specifically to your gender?
I think it relates to Lancaster County asking for their fair share and I do think there's some gender issues there also.
Okay. Thank you.
Pam, do you have a suggestion for, and you don't have to go into, if you have, you know, into detail here, but do you have a suggestion for how Lancaster County could be better represented in this process?
I think that the way that we look at the voting moving forward, that there needs to be some funding distribution goal for Lancaster County. Some percentage of it. I mean, it's interesting as we look in year four of this funding, we look, year one is 6.5 million, year two, 6.5 million, year three, 6.5 million. And there's a funding bump in year four to 10.7 million. And so even though that 4.2 million was unexpected, the city of Lincoln still asked for 100% of the funding. So if it's unexpected funding, I mean, couldn't we at least get a fair share with the bump? I'm just asking for Lancaster County to have the opportunity for the funding without having a throwdown like we have the last two years.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Would it be realistic, since 90% of the population's in the city and 10% in the county, for that to be a process of, of determining fund usage?
You know, I think that's an interesting question and I think when we look at planning as a whole, Mr. Campbell, what we sometimes miss is, it really is planning for the whole. And if we're focusing on our development fringes, it really is a benefit to both Lincoln and Lancaster County to have these facilities improved. So I'm gonna say a 90-10 split doesn't necessarily seem very equitable still. I'm further gonna say that the 18 years in which we got no funding, that there should be something to make up for that as we go forward.
As a follow-up question, if we were to add Fletcher back to the MPO, there would need to be some reduction in funds to some other projects. How would that be determined?
Well, you know, I'd have to ask the city of Lincoln. Again, the list of projects that they've come forward with were undefined at the time that we had our, our project selection committee meetings and the projects were being voted on. They were simply stated as system maintenance and system optimization. So I am not aware of the city of Lincoln's priorities, so I can't really comment to that. I appreciate the question.
But it would ha, it would have to come out of the city's priorities.
It, it would reduce the city's priorities, that's correct. It has to balance.
And what is the cost on the Fletcher project?
I do have that with me. What we have initially asked for on the Fletcher project is actually just, just engineering. And what we asked for was $184,000, $184,400. The same with the Arbor Rid, Arbor Ridge Road, Arbor Road?
Bridge.
Bridge. That's a little bit of a tongue twister today. Apologize for that. We asked for $118,400. But of course, you know, once you've asked for them, it, you know, it would be also nice to build them, so.
Thank you.
And why you have that list out, the two projects you mentioned are those and those, you're looking at the fringes of what we've been talking about for our annexations and those types of things?
That is correct.
Awesome. And then do you have a project list that you can share? Or how does that process work? Maybe I, just to help me understand a little more.
How the process works is we're asked to provide projects to the committee. Lancaster County did provide projects, named projects to the committee with estimates. The city of Lincoln provided two projects, system optimization and system maintenance with their request.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions right now? I just want to thank you for coming forward. I know that this was tough and I appreciate you bringing your concerns to us because we do represent both the city and the county and, and I feel that you should be at that meeting because you were elected and, and put into this position to represent the voters. And so obviously they feel comfortable putting you in this position and so you should be there.
I just believe Lancaster County should have a voice and, and a percentage of this funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Further testimony in opposition? Okay, so we're ready for staff questions.
David Carey with Lincoln, Lancaster County Planning Department.
Go ahead.
David, this roughly $250,000 that those two projects would amount to. If we were to add those two projects back to the county's list, and I know this has to go back to the MPO group, I would think that out of three years of 6.5 million and one year of 10 some million, that they could be able to find 250,000. So would that be the process that we would need to use, would be to amend? Recommend amending this to include those two projects?
Well, I guess I would start to answer that question by saying that the step that you're taking today is similar to what we just did with the CIP, which is to find the program effectively in conformance with the long-range transportation plan instead of the comprehensive plan, which is the CIP's, you know, guiding document. So as far as getting into the actual budgeting of money, that wouldn't necessarily be this body's action. So that, that's more just to be clear. Obviously, the topic at hand here is, you know, is there money available? How could that happen? The actual process to do that is the process that's been taken to get to this point. Well, we have a project selection committee identified, at which the county engineer is represented by one of her staff members. Just want to be clear about that. So that, those meetings did take place. That is the established process to create this proposal that's before you today. There's a further process. You alluded to it, or somebody alluded to it earlier. This Friday, this document will go to the, the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Committee. And that is the, the next formal step, where they will review the TIP. They will make a recommendation to the officials committee. I will note that there is representation from the county engineer's office on the technical committee for approving this document. Then I'll go to officials committee, at which was mentioned earlier that the chair and vice chair of the county commissioners is on that committee for voting. It is at that point that this actually gets approved. And so the, all these And so all these steps have either already been taken or are going to be taken after today's meeting. So I just want to make sure on the record that that is clear, that we are following the established process. Now, if you want to get into talking about, should that process be different? I would say that today's hearing is not that venue for that. We have been talking about that internally. We have received some of these comments, and we understand that there is some concern with that. That is not a complete surprise to me. But it also is not the point in time in which to change the process that we have in place to do this. It certainly could change in the future. I would also just take the opportunity to say that the last cycle in this did provide funding to a county project, significant amount of money. And those conversations for other projects are ongoing. But I would say that one of the projects in particular, the Fletcher Ave project, is something that, when we talk about the process that needs to be taken, that the LRTP needs to be amended in order to include that project in the TIP, because it does not show that full stretch of that roadway yet in the LRTP. You are aware that we are updating both the Comprehensive Plan and the Long Range Transportation Plan, and that's gonna be a long process, but that is the venue in which to change the LRTP that could potentially show different types of projects and in prioritized lists for the county side of things. We are very open to doing that. That is not a problem. It has not been done yet, though, so that's kind of the catch here that we have at this point in time. So just to kind of go back up a little bit, that the process that we have in place to follow has been followed. I would also really like to emphasize that, and this is not news to those of us in the room here today, but I want to make sure it's clear that there is not enough money for everyone. There just isn't. Everybody has more needs than what we have revenues for. I understand that. We try to work through what the priorities are, how best to spend the money. This is an annual program that will come back to you next year as well. It's not biannual like the city budget is. So we are going to be having an ongoing conversation about this. So you very well could see a county project, that's a new county project that's funded next year for this proposal. So that's more just to kind of put perspective and context to this entire conversation. So I understand the concern that the county engineer has. But I would also say that we have gotten to this point by following an established process.
So in other words, we should only look at what's before us as whether it conforms with the Comprehensive Plan?
Yes, that's what I am recommending to you today. And again, I just, doesn't mean it can't change in the future. Certainly, something could be adjusted this Friday at the Technical Committee meeting. If something significant changes, we might have to come back to this body. But at this point in time, we're asking you to take action based on what's been put before you.
And as we deal with the comp plan revision, that might be where we add those projects?
Correct. And specifically, the long-range transportation plan part of that overall process.
Great, thank you.
And the review of the process itself, of the selection process itself? What if, if there were questions or concerns about what that process is? What are the, what are the steps for reviewing that and who's involved in that?
Well, basically, I would say that the most immediate step for that would be, you know, the topic can be discussed at the MPO level of things, which is both the Technical Committee and the Officials Committee. So the Officials Committee comprises the elected officials that are the final deciders of these programs. And then the Technical Committee is the staff level, representing different agencies and departments. So that is, that is, will always be an open discussion if it's desired.
Thank you.
Can you kind of give me more of an idea about the MPO? Like, how many, so how many people are we talking that are on that committee or on that?
The Technical Committee, I believe, is something like 18 people? Yeah.
And you said the technical is staff, and then the officials are the elected?
Yes, and so the Technical Committee is chaired, we have a tri-chair set up. So it is the, the county engineer is one of the tri-chairs. Planning Director is one of them, and then the Director of Transportation Utilities is the other tri-chair.
And so out of those people on the staff level, if we're talking about percentages of makeup, you know, how many are, and I know sometimes this gets hard, because we combine city and county things, but how many represent the city? How many represent the county?
If we use the number of about 20 people on that committee, we have formerly two of the 20 represented specifically by the County Engineers' Office. That would be that 90-10 split that was brought up earlier, as far as population split is concerned, between city and rural county. And again, you point out correctly that there are multiple city-county agencies that are, anybody from planning is a city-county representative as well.
How many people from planning are on this?
There are, three?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
One thing that might be helpful for in future years is under the Funding Summary, if we might be able to see a breakdown between local dollars being used for City of Lincoln projects and local dollars being used for Lancaster County projects under the Funding Summary tab. Like, for example, we have breakdowns of federal, state, and local dollars and what have you. We do have a chart, and maybe just walking through that chart might be, might help us understand that a little bit better from LTU versus Lancaster County, things like that. And maybe I'm just not being able to break that down fully enough to see if I can get to what a percentage split might be. But maybe going forward, something explicitly stating in the Funding Summary of what those breakdowns are might be useful going forward. Just a couple of other comments, generally speaking. Paul, did you want to say something in regards to that?
I think that that would be easy to get in some sort of chart or graph form for you. Page, I think it's I-2.
Yeah, and it looks like the numbers are on I-2 table right there. So Paul, would it be correct in my understanding of the chart on I-2? Because I don't, I guess my question is, is that if we're trying to do a comparison of where dollars that we actually are able to control and where they're going, so we take out federal dollars, we take out state dollars, and just focus on the local dollars? Or how do we, how do we properly figure out that these are the dollars that, that, that are under local control? And we can decide where those go?
Well, I would assume that the numbers that we get from the State Department of Transportation that go into the TRP are numbers that we can control, and that's done at the MPO level.
Okay.
For those federal and state dollars.
Okay, so from, from state dollars, there's not necessarily a tie that binds any of those dollars to specific projects that the state wants to see happen?
They very well could be.
But not always?
I think it depends on the funding source and if it's a certain grant type, then yes.
Right. No, and I'm just trying to focus on the dollars that we actually control, as opposed to the dollars that may have strings associated with them?
Gotcha.
Maybe I would just add to that. The, what is historically been referred to as Surface Transportation Program dollars and the federal funding that comes through the state that comes to MPOs like ourselves. Once those are allocated, that the local MPO level decision-making controls the use of those funds.
Okay.
As long as they're being used in a proper way, such as they are going towards programs and projects that are identified in the plan.
Okay, okay. So basically, as long as they're identified in the plan and there has been a system in place to make sure that that funding and how that funding will be used has been properly vetted, then those dollars are really to be used as seen fit?
Correct.
Okay.
For example, the program that LTU has requested these dollars for, for the next year is a way that the federal dollars through the state have been appropriately conveyed for many years now. So that's been identified as an appropriate use of the funds.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it very much. And maybe there is, I would love to know if there's, if there's a way for me to interpret, maybe after this hearing today, to interpret the information on I-2 appropriately. So just for my own information, I think it might be useful maybe for this board too. A couple of other items that I wanted to mention, just generally speaking. You know, it's always tough and difficult to have county engineers, Planning Department, LTU butt heads about what is transpiring with these public funds. You know, to a certain extent, we're on the outside looking in as a board. We're removed from the process, which is healthy and as it should be. But it's also difficult for us to ascertain in the real world what's actually going on in these meetings, during these funding sources are being discussed. And, you know, I have to say to all parties involved, it is troubling to see these discussions rear their head. And, but perhaps that's the way it is right now, and perhaps we need to go through that in order to get to a more broad consensus as to how we approach these things going forward. That said, I'll speak for myself personally. You know, if, if, if there are any planning or LTU employees or anyone else that has a problem working with, with the county engineer or anyone else in, in our city government because of their gender, it's a problem. And I sincerely hope that that's not the case. And I sincerely hope that if that is, if any employee ever sees that, they feel empowered to call that out and put a stop to it immediately. I would hope that employees under your department, Director Carey, would feel empowered to do that immediately. Because I think, I'll speak for myself, I don't think it's appropriate, if that's what's going on. So, thank you very much for your time today.
I completely agree with what you just said.
I had a question, but I forgot it. I know, it's not surprising. Any other questions for Mr. Carey right now?
Nope, thank you.
I know what it was. The county engineer talked about, it sounded like it was kind of listed broadly under the city projects and just listed like optimization and, you know, just kind of a general term there. Can we list those out a little more specifically?
I will answer part of that, and then Paul's gonna be able to walk you through that a little bit. Just to be clear, the program way of handling that has been deemed appropriate as far as how that can be represented in the TIP. You can do it either by project-specific or by a program. So for many years now, we've had, Lincoln just mentioned, the utilities has used federal funds for their street maintenance program, which is a general program. And then the decisions are made about what streets are actually gonna be done using those dollars as it happens. But Paul's got other information that I'm sure he can explain a little bit more on.
So it's actually called a group of projects. And that's a process and an agreement that the MPO has with the Department of Transportation of the state. And there's a process that you can program a group of projects by putting in the TIP under a group heading. So in this example, we're talking about transportation system preservation and transportation system optimization. And if you look at C1 in both of those categories, it says C Appendix at the end. If you flip to the appendix, that's where those specific projects are listed. And it gives a little more flexibility in terms of those types of projects that are throughout the community. But that is the list that's included in the TIP specifically.
So was that list provided during these meetings?
I think it was maybe provided later in that process with the Subcommittee, but it was brought up as part of the discussion with that Subcommittee that that list was needed.
Okay.
The Subcommittee has seen this draft TIP as well. This has been shared with all of the agencies, so it's been, you know, shared amongst all at this point.
During, so I'm a little bit at a disadvantage, and I'm trying to understand. So to me, it would be helpful to have some of this in one of those meetings, and perhaps it was. So that everyone, you know, that's involved in those meetings can see this detail before, you know, like she's trying to give her specific projects so she can see what your specific projects are, because sometimes there might be maybe some cost sharing or something that could go on as well. So was that specific list, like, available during the meetings, before the meetings?
Right, so the last meeting that the Subcommittee held was to review this draft and go through all of that, look at all of the projects, and as a group, talk about it, discuss it, and make a recommendation moving forward. So that was part of the process.
Okay. Any other questions right now?
No.
Okay. So you guys are kind of applicant as well, so I think, are we ready to?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edgerton.
Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I would move that we find 20001 to be in conformance with the Long Range Transportation Plan.
Second, Edgerton.
Discussion.
Yeah, I, I would like to maybe pass on as a separate, not a motion, I guess, but a recommendation to the MPO Committee to seriously look at finding ways to add those two projects back in. Recently, we've had two projects, one by each one of those areas, that we've approved. And so it really is gonna become city issue if they don't get taken care of now and if they're engineered now. At least we're ahead of the game in trying to get them up to speed for what they should be moving forward. So I think those two projects have a high priority, just because of where we're already zoning around them. So I will move that all of the ones that are on the list are in conformance, but I do think the Committee should look at the other two.
Yeah, and I agree with my fellow commissioners that we want to make sure that we deal with what's coming up and then also try to encourage working together and looking at it holistically, since we represent everyone.
That's right.
Yeah, I think that the projects here are in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. And I think, as Commissioner Joy had mentioned, perhaps today's discussion has given more opportunity to discuss ways that this group can work moving forward.
I would like to encourage more collaboration between the different players and for everyone to, you know, you know, look at funding things that we can do together. But I do think that this is in conformance with the Long Range Transportation Plan. But I do really encourage our city officials and our county officials to look at kind of maybe revamping this process so that we can have a little more cohesive development next time. Jerry?
Okay, this is for finding of conformance with the Long Range Transportation Plan. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I'd like to make a resolution that we, that we pass on to the MPO Committee that we'd like them to possibly look at adding the Fletcher project and the bridge project back into their programs as possible.
Tim C, City Attorney's Office. The items that are on the agenda have been voted on at this point. It would be inappropriate, and under the Open Meetings Act, to start adding resolutions or items to the agenda. So if that was something we wanted to do, it would need to be part of a future agenda, but not today's agenda.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so I think we're a little bit ahead of schedule. So our next item is supposed to come before us at 2:15, so we'll just take a short break here until 2:15 comes up. So our next item is supposed to come before us at two fifteen. So we'll just take a short break here until two fifteen comes up.
All right. Under continued public hearing and administrative action, we have item five point one, special permit two zero 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 eight to allow for the development of a community unit plan with up to twenty-eight dwelling units with requested waivers to lot dimensions, setbacks, and the private roadway design standards on property generally located at Fletcher Avenue and Telluride Drive. This is final action. Unless appealed to the city council within fourteen days, staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site to be, to be disclosed?
No. Go ahead, Steve.
Steve Hendrickson at the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department. Just a reminder, this is a continued public hearing that we had last time. It was just re-advertised. Do some items that were left off. And so we've already had, you had already called for people in support. We last time did have testimony from a person in opposition. And we have two other people here to speak in opposition, and we'll bring the first one out right now.
Great. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi. Can you tell us your name and address for the record, please?
Ellie Hardikoff, twenty-three sixty-five Telluride Circle.
Thank you. And it'll take just a, oh, they're ready for you.
Just a couple of things I wanted to talk to differently from the last time. I just wanted to take a picture of what this is, this is our neighborhood. So it's a circle. This is the first way you go, and then it ends up down in the circle over here. And the circle isn't overly large. It's just big enough to really to get, like my camper and truck turned around in there. So I just wanted to kind of point out the types of houses that we have there. And then also show on this one, it's a little harder. But this is the entrance to our property here. This is Telluride Drive, and Fletcher is right here. So, the driveway to this new development is probably gonna be right about in here. So that gives you maybe three car lengths, if that, to the stop sign. But I also wanted to point out, you know, in our neighborhood, you don't see any fourplexes, you don't see any urban feel. You don't see a lot of crowding. And so I'm just concerned again that you put twenty-eight units into a, a space that size. Cause really, this is it. This is this field right here. That is where all that property's going. And it just, again, twelve cars on the street this morning, where are they gonna go? So, that's really kind of what I wanted to show is what our neighborhood looks like. So you have an idea that the urban look isn't that.
And remind me, those are single-family homes, or are they duplexes there?
These are duplexes. So I live on one side, and there's another person on the other side. And the bigger units that you see over here are the same thing. It's just they're two-story, but all the other ones are single-story.
Thank you. Any questions for Ellie right now? No? Okay.
I do have one.
Oh, yep, okay.
There's a lot of on-street parking. Why aren't people parking in their driveways?
Well, they already are parking in their driveways. The, the one family two houses away from me has two teenage boys and a mom and dad.
Got it.
So, mom and dad either have the garage or the driveway, and the boys have the street. And as I mentioned in my first meeting, that out of those thirty-two homes, only twelve are owned by homeowners. So the others are all rented out.
And they're, the garages are one stall?
No, they're two stalls, two stall garages. And most of the units have basements. So there's, it's not like the ones that they're gonna be potentially building, they don't have any basement. So, if they use that for storage, then that creates more parking somewhere else.
So you're saying that several of those folks may be unrelated folks who all have their own vehicles?
Right.
In the same unit?
Right. And the driveways aren't big enough to put four vehicles in the driveway without covering the sidewalk?
Sure. Thank you.
And do you know if there was, in the original agreement, like when you bought your lot, did they talk about having additional parking in like areas, like?
No. No, there's, was no discussion. There's, we have no H O A.
Okay.
For one. So I was relying either on the realtor or the seller. And they just indicated that property was at one time slated for a church.
Okay.
But no mention of anything else going in, so.
Not additional lots, or?
No. And the street's not a, a normal-sized street either. You can, you can get a parked car, and you have to be very slow in getting two other cars to go by. Otherwise, you're hugging the mailbox and you're hugging the car. Cause there's not enough room for, in fact, the dump truck, or the garbage command came the other day. He saw that I was backing out, so he waited so I could pull over and he could pass me. Otherwise, there was no way we would've made it down that road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Other testimony in opposition.
Hello?
Hi.
My name is Deanna Lynn Mentor. And I live at two three six nine Telluride Circle. And I'm nervous, I've never done this before.
Okay. We don't bite.
Don't be, don't be nervous.
So I just want to start off by saying that my husband and I have lived at twenty-three sixty-nine Telluride Circle for almost fourteen years. We are familiar with the neighborhood, the people who live here and our neighbors. And I also wanted to say that we are supportive of a development project, but have several concerned, about, concerns about the current proposal. So the first thing is, the density of the development is so tight. When looking at what is proposed, it's gonna be so many homes to fit into such a small area. This is not comfortable for the current people in the neighborhood, or for ones that will be moving into these developments. It just seems like they're trying to cram as many homes as possible. And to me, it seems kind of greedy, instead of making it an enjoyable neighborhood to live in. Big thing for my family, I have two kids. So lack of park space for the North Creek neighborhood. In the proposed layout, there's a lot of wasted land that would be much better used for a park. We would love to see a playground, basketball, skateboard, even some public parking space. Since it is so crowded in the proposed development, just wondering if they could get rid of units twenty-one through twenty-four, turn them to face Kokomo Drive and make a park space for the neighborhood. I did make some original comments, and I'm just gonna read, these were submitted online. Public park space for the children of North Creek and surrounding neighborhoods is very limited. The closest park, with or without equipment, is Schleich Park, S C H L E I C H Park, at North Thirty-Fourth and Ridge Park Drive. This park is a one-mile walk for existing residents surrounding the proposed development, and a further distance for those living south and west of the development. Additionally, from our neighborhood, people must cross Twenty-seventh Street and Fletcher Avenue, North Twenty-third Street to access this park. These roads consist of multiple lanes of traffic with forty to forty-five mile-per-hour speed limits, creating a potentially hazardous situation for children and parents. The next closest park is Seech Park, K E E C H Park, located between Walgreens Store and Isley Library on Superior Street. From our neighborhood, using the fastest route to the park, which would be Fletcher to Fourteenth Street, it is a two-mile walk. And there's also not a complete sidewalk system. Again, traffic on both Fletcher and North Fourteenth Street, as well as Superior is moving at a high rate of speed, creating potentially hazardous situation for parents and children. So that's my comments about the park. Then the next comment is about parking. And I understand from, I read the staff report, so the comments made in the staff report, that there's a requirement for one guest parking stall for every two units. I also understand that our development predated this requirement, but that doesn't mean that it should not still be required. If it's required now for the city, why would that change for homes that were already in existence? There's a reason for this, so that there is not overcrowding. There's current, currently several rental properties already on our street, as was previously stated. These new homes look like they will also be rental properties as well. In our experience, and we have lots of experience living on the street for almost fourteen years with lots of rental families. In our experience, they will house multiple people and sometimes multiple families with a car for each person. For example, next door to us is a rental property with three to five people living there. We can never tell how many people are actually living there, with, all with their own cars. So they squeeze three into there, but the third car is usually over the sidewalk. And then they park two on the street, and they will completely lose that parking. Because they're, right across from us will be the driveways. My other comment is that my husband works as an essential worker for a company where he's required to have a company vehicle. He has to park this on the street across from our house. In the new development, there will be driveways directly across the street and very little street parking. After he has worked all day in a physically exhausting job, we are asking him to park it two to three blocks away and walk with his tools and whatever else needed back to our house. The other day, a new neighbor was also moving in, and actually had to ask my husband to move his truck so that he could even fit the moving van into the street. And so he asked him to move it, and, just so that they could fit it to, to move in. It won't even be possible to fit moving truck onto our street without blocking driveways or access to the street. This is a single-lane, small road that's gonna become way overcrowded. There's no parking on the south side of Telluride Circle unless you block mailboxes and neighbors' driveways, which is what's gonna happen. And so my other suggestion was wondering if the developers could turn the duplexes number seventeen to twenty so that they face Kokomo Drive instead of Telluride Circle. This would allow some parking to be kept on the north side of Telluride Circle, while allowing the developments to still be built. And finally, I'm just asking for the planning commission to put yourself in our position. If you lived where we are for the past thirteen years and want to invite a few family members or friends over for a gathering, and they have to park two to three blocks away each time. My dad is blind with several My dad is blind with several health issues. Obviously, we would have him park in our driveway if they came. But how would you feel if you had someone over and there was nowhere to park? I just want you to think of the elderly people in our neighborhood, several that would not come today because of COVID-19. And take time to drive down our street and see the current overcrowding of parked cars. Please think about the best thing for the people that love this neighborhood and our community.
Questions? In your, in your earlier remarks, you said something about units, several units and where, what your thoughts were.
The first one was.
I'm looking at the map now, so I just want to get a visual for that.
So the first one was the park space. I was looking at units 21 through 24.
Okay.
And seeing if that, if those could just be eliminated. And then you could create a park space there that would be so wonderful for the whole neighborhood, not just our street, but just that whole neighborhood, like we have nothing in the north end.
And then 17 through 20, you were wondering about re.
Just turning it, yeah, because then that would still allow, instead of having those driveways coming out onto Telluride Circle, that would allow our street to still have some parking and they could still build their development. And they would have parking on their street.
And are you right across from where, your home is right across from where Kokomo Drive?
Let me grab my map here and I'll show you where we are. Is this where I'm putting it?
Yep.
Okay. So we are, let me just double-check here.
Okay.
One of these two, it's hard to tell sometimes. So you'll see, and my husband usually parks right across here with his vehicle. So you'll see you'd have those driveways right here. And then this is the rental properties here where a lot of times we have college students.
Sure.
So if those were turned so that they faced this way, they would still have, you know, their lots.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming out today.
Thank you.
Any other testimony in opposition? I think that was it, but make sure, okay. So we are ready for staff questions.
Steve Hendrickson with Planning Department. I think we can address a couple of the questions that came up last time as well as any additional ones that you have.
Anyone have any questions? I know I do, but.
Well, what I can start with is the three that were mentioned at the last meeting. We did determine that the existing Telluride Circle is actually a standard-width street. So 27 feet wide, the standard width. Perhaps because of the two curves in it, people feel a little less comfortable. Maybe it feels smaller. Maybe it's harder to determine where the curb is because on the south side, there's quite a few driveways. Maybe that's why it gives the impression of being a more narrow street to the residents, but it is the same. Would also note as the photo shows here, that there is 22 feet. There's actually 25 feet from the garage face to the property line and probably an additional three feet or so to the sidewalk. The properties in this area were all developed under a preliminary plat. The existing zoning has a 25-foot front yard setback. So all of the garages would be appropriately spaced so you could have the two garages and one stall without hanging over the sidewalk. If you try to go two stalls or two cars, then yes, I would agree they would go over. But it, in essence, provides four parking spaces, two in the garage and two in the driveway as normally required. The other item that came up had to do with a question about, instead of having the access for the new Kokomo Drive coming out to Telluride Circle, could it instead go out to Telluride Drive over there? Telluride Drive is just south of Fletcher. And that's, doesn't really leave a lot of stacking. And really, actually, if it was going to be a cul-de-sac at all, it would be the other way. You would have it, have only one way in and out off of Telluride Circle. In discussing this with the applicant, we thought it was actually best, even though it was a little close to Fletcher, to have both ways. That way, some of the residents could go out to Telluride Drive and some would come out to Telluride Circle. So it really wouldn't be appropriate to get rid of the access to Telluride Circle because then you'd have probably an unfortunate stacking circumstance out on Telluride Drive. And certainly then to address the comment that's been made most often, yes, it is unfortunate that this project and several others in the city were developed before we had guest parking. It was actually the experience of these kind of projects, specifically one that we had in the area of 25th South to Superior, where the residents, quite soon after it opened, called the city and said, hey, the way this is done, there's just no guest parking, particularly when there's people on both sides. They have actually benefited by the fact that this was purchased by a church and was looked at as a church site for many, many years, that they had all of those years to park on the other side. Otherwise, had it been townhomes to begin with on both sides, there would have been no parking whatsoever. The fortunate thing here is though that because we do have that guest parking requirement, the new project is meeting all of that guest parking, including they also have the garage stalls and are required to make sure there's enough space that they don't hang out over the sidewalk, as well as there, as little bits of, of pieces of on-street parking still remaining. And I think Mike Eckert can address how many of the stalls of on-street parking on Telluride Circle might be left.
Kokomo Drive is a private road, is that correct? And as such, and some of the parking that's, that's marked on there for the new development is on-street parking.
Correct.
I presume that would mean that because it's a private drive, the folks that are currently there would not necessarily be able to access that for their parking needs.
Correct. It would be up to the new association to try to take some action to say, hey, this is only meant for, for our residents. Because it's not a city street, there wouldn't be anything the city would do in terms of enforcing that.
When you gave the width of Telluride Circle, basically you're saying this is wide enough for emergency vehicles, like fire trucks and stuff, to make it down even with parking on both sides of the street?
Correct. It's typically in a typical street, you have cars parked on both sides and it's still wide enough for all types of vehicles to go down the center of the street. In this case, because there's so many driveways on the south side, there really won't be any cars parked on the south side of the street. So it makes it even easier for a vehicle to go around.
And there's enough room for a fire truck to do the circle that's already at the end of Telluride Circle?
Yes, as long as somebody doesn't park in it, that is the case.
Okay. Can you, there was a little bit of question last time about why, and you talked about this a little bit, but not really from the standpoint that I'm thinking of here. It was stated that, and I think Mr. Eckert said this in his testimony last time, that you guys really wanted the Kokomo Drive to be a through street instead of just like a, you know, a dead end in there. Can you explain, I mean, you said you wanted the traffic to be able to go both ways, entrance and exit. Is there any other reasons why or?
No, I, I think that was the, the primary point is that it just allows for some of the traffic to go out directly to Telluride Drive. Otherwise, it probably would have been a cul-de-sac strictly off Telluride Circle, which may not have been any different than, we have some other places where due to drainage ways or something, you have more cars coming down the street. So this will definitely be an increase in the number of vehicles, but no more than had it been developed with units on both sides of the street day one. It's a very typical type of an arrangement.
But the reality is, is that it wasn't like that from day one. So certainly, these residents have, have gotten used to the access and at the time perhaps thought that it was being developed in a way, you know, a church or the other types of things that were contemplated before. So, you know, it's, their, you know, their perspective is a little different than if it had been built out from the beginning. And within the, within the purview of a special permit for a community unit plan, I mean, the, the planning commission does have the opportunity to make provisions for different parking that, for example, that may make accommodations for additional parking that could be different than what is exactly required in the statute. This is my understanding.
In essence, yes. Part of the challenge here is, is that the applicant is meeting all of the parking requirements. So they're, they're not asking for you to waive a parking requirement like you've had in some where it's only 1.5 stalls per two. They're providing the parking. They're also even providing the additional guest parking. And so it's kind of a challenge. Sometimes we have stormwater management issues where an applicant comes in and addresses all of their stormwater management issues. But do you put additional cost on them because some adjacent property has some particular issue? Well, they're not making it worse, but is it up to them really to fix that initial issue? And so that's the, the challenge here. And so we think it's appropriate that they have met all of their parking requirements, including the guest parking requirements. There's still on, some on-street left on Telluride Circle. It's an unfortunate circumstance, but we don't think it's necessarily fair to put on the new development that they have to go over and beyond what is the parking requirement.
Steve, odd question. Could a resident park in front of their own curb cut legally on the street? As long as they weren't blocking anyone else's access?
I'll ask Bob Simmering to make an appearance back from the back there.
Is Bob back there?
Yes, Bob is back there.
He's hiding from us?
If he is willing to, to come in.
In these new days, we never know who's back there, so. Hi, Bob.
Do I need to introduce myself?
Maybe for the record.
Bob Simmering, L T U.
Bob, could a resident park in front of their own driveway on the street if they so choose?
The enforcement of blocking driveways is strictly on complaint basis. So if they park there and complained.
About themselves?
Husband against the wife or something, yes, it could be enforced, but.
So currently, you're not allowed to do that?
You can't park within five feet of somebody else's curb cut.
Okay, so let's say if you're, if you're, if you had a 30-foot curb cut, for example, not in this example, but generally speaking, and your car was only 11 feet long, you could position yourself to park in the middle of your curb cut and meet city ordinance?
Well, you, you would not meet the city ordinance, but it wouldn't be enforced except on a complaint basis. So if the owner didn't complain, nobody's going out.
Sure, but, but, okay, thank you.
Bob, on a parallel parking stall, generally how long are they?
They're approximately 20 feet.
Okay, thank you.
If someone, I'm going to kind of piggyback on Tom's question there. Is that something that if, if it's complained about and someone comes out and looks at it, do they have to see it happening or? Because if they don't see it, then is it kind of like, well, I can't go by someone's word? Or how do you guys do that?
Well, the police enforce that. L T U does not enforce that.
Okay, so you don't know the answer.
So I would assume they need to see it.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Bob while he's in here?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So I, I know it's always hard to request a new developer to do things to be neighborly, but as a, in the past, would it be something we've done where you can have them provide an additional five parking stalls or something like that off of Telluride Circle?
I'm not familiar with any case we've done that in recent history and I've been here six years, so.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and oh, real quick though, and then Kokomo Drive coming out on to Telluride Drive, that close to the intersection of Fletcher?
Yeah, we have, on residential streets, the separation distance for connections is only 50 feet. We prefer to have longer spacings, particularly come off of something like Fletcher. But looking at the circumstances of traffic movement here, we felt it was appropriate to have that connection at that location.
Okay. I don't think I have any questions for Bob, but I think I do have one for you, Steve. If there was a, instead of making Kokomo Drive go all the way through, what if it just came off of Telluride Drive and was a cul-de-sac in there? How would planning feel about something like that?
Yeah, so if the street coming out to Telluride Circle was removed, that was one option looked at. I think our concern, and that also of Bob Simmering, he can pop back in if he disagrees, was that was discussed and we actually discouraged that because then you have a fair amount of cars with coming out right that close to Fletcher. Had it been blocks away from Fletcher, maybe that could have also been an appropriate way. But here, we thought it was better to have the, the two-way functioning versus everything going out to Telluride Drive. That that would be more of a challenge for the residents, the new residents on Telluride Drive.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Steve right now? Okay, we're ready for the applicant rebuttal then.
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group. I will start with a couple of quick things in terms of, you know, in terms of the site plan, we did wrestle with this thing, as I mentioned, two weeks ago for, really for months in working with the planning department on how to configure this. And obviously, a developer wants to get the maximum density he can and we're only at 60% of what is allowed by the current zoning. And so, yeah, in terms of flipping the units, but given the extra two weeks, sometimes this is nice. It gives me time to, to look at things.
To get creative?
Right. So what we did was we put in the amount of cars in AutoCAD. So these are to scale, as you asked Commissioner Campbell. And so they'll still be able to get six here. Probably two right in this location, another two here. And we've also, we've shown if the street wasn't there, what are they, what impact is that? It's really probably three cars. And then there'd still be four over here. So if we had four, two, even say one, so that's seven, six more is 13. And if on the cul-de-sac, if, if another, six or seven cars could park, that's almost still enough off-street parking stalls to meet the current requirement of one stall for every two units. There's 32 units on Telluride Circle. So if we were to plat this today with the south side and ours, we would still have enough on-street parking to meet the current parking code requirement. So I, I think it was helpful to see that and that it, 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 there, there is still going to be some. So maybe not as much as I want, not as much as I were used to. And again, just a reminder from last week, the developer agreed to widen private driveway, Kokomo Drive, from 21 feet wide to 25 feet wide to allow for, let me get that back up there, I probably shouldn't have pulled it off. To allow for these stalls here, which we can probably get another stall there. We show a car there. There might be the potential to have one more down there. And so that was at no little expense to, to do that and to get additional stalls at the request of the planning department. So, you know, otherwise, I think everything's pretty straightforward. Like we're at a limited density, we're providing the stalls we need. And, you know, the SS was planned to be a church, but we do have a comprehensive plan goal to do infill as much as possible. And this is what it's all about, is being able to put in buildings like this where we've got the arterial streets in on the sewer and water. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions you have.
How strict is this new development going to be for allowing current residents, you know, not in their development, to park on those, on that private street?
You know, I, I don't know that I can answer that except that I would assume that it will be just a complaint-driven process probably at the end of the day. There's a public access easement over that drive for them to be able to drive through there. But the parking, I think, is treated differently, that it is a private road and could be limited to them. So, so I think there were, I, I do not know. So I think there were, I do not know if there would be signage put up that says resident only. And if that happens, it would just be probably a police enforcement issue.
There was a request by one of the people that came to testify about switching units 17 through 20. And turning them, would there, now, I'm not very good at scale, so is there enough room to turn those there so they're taking access off of Kokomo? Or?
You know, there's not, because it's, we've got this with Tracy, and we've looked at that. And we were, not only in the setback, we were really probably right up against the curb. And so, and then if we kept the drive exiting there, we were getting some sight distance issues. But regardless, I mean, we were well within the setback, and we would have loved to have spun another one, at least internally. But it just didn't work and, you know, I think, as with a lot of projects, this developer bought this contingent upon, you know, zoning approvals. And we worked with planning, and then once they knew how many units they could get, they established a price and kind of went forward. So in terms of the park stuff, I mean, that's kind of a bigger global issue for the city. And, you know, we have them now at one per mile, and so.
I have a question about that for you. Would you be willing, I mean, you've got some green space going on here. From the aerial, it looks like there's kind of a lot of trees and a lot of that green space that you're leaving there. But would you be, would the developer be willing to put in, you know, maybe a play structure that the neighbor kids could play on? Or that, you know, is that anything they'd be open to?
Well, based on my experience with multifamily projects, there's obviously some inherent liabilities that come with that. And multifamily projects are usually more able to restrict the use of it. When you put up a private structure for public use, I think it gets too difficult to do. So my answer would be no, probably based on the liability to this group's association.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, one of the other things that was brought up was staggering the drives. Can you look at that when you're doing that design? Can you give it a little push and pull? I don't know the slopes and everything, but.
When you talk about staggering the drives, is it the driveway locations?
Correct. And I know it's pretty dense, so, you know, can that move over a couple of feet? Just to give them a little more sense of security as they're backing up? That was just mentioned. If you could look at that when you're doing your final layout?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I think we've got, a lot of these building footprints are up into the corners. In fact, some of them had to been trimmed off. But, you know, we can, we can look at that. These are based on the anticipated footprint of the building with the two-stall garage. And as well as the desire to get the 22-foot from the back of sidewalk to the front of the garage door. But no, by all means, I think when their architect finalizes things, we could certainly try to look at that.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. Dick?
Mike, the, one of the things that not only have I seen, but we also did, was to take the two drives and not having, not having two accesses at the street. Of bringing it in and having one access for two units and then flooring it out for that full width once you get in.
Yeah.
By doing that, we would save the developers some money in concrete. But it also would open up a little more space in there. So that would be something else you might want to look at.
Sure, no, I appreciate, that was at Village Gardens.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we could certainly take a closer look at that, too, so.
I can't remember, are these units supposed to have basements or are they slab?
I think the anticipation is there would be slab on grade, two-story units.
And I would just like to echo that I did a count of, with these units built on-street, still open parking spots, and did not count the cul-de-sac and still came very close to what he has.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you for coming back today.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Jerry?
I have a second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ryman Yost.
Oh, I am sorry.
I'm off, turned off still from the break.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I would move that we approve this project as presented. Trying to get back to the number. Special Permit 20008, I recommend approval.
Second, Beckyus?
I, they are the second to come in. And so you've got a lot of people that have just gotten in habits on there. And even though, even if they don't combine the driveways having one exit for the two units, there's still quite a bit of on-street parking along that north side. And none of us are very happy when we've lived there for 14 years or whatever to see a bunch of other people coming in. But it, you, they, I find they adapt fairly quickly, and there's just new routines that start to happen. This is a piece of property that's an infill project, and the comp plan has always encouraged the infill projects. So I will be supporting this motion.
I too will be supporting the motion. I find that the developer is working well within the parameters of our subdivision ordinance, especially in terms of a lower density than what may be otherwise prescribed. I think that the development on-site here, the proposed development here on-site, offers some nice green open space in between units. I think the heartburn, of course, has to do with the existing units to the south of the proposed project, which unfortunately are a bit of their own making. You know, Telluride Circle is a public street. I don't know that, how you go about justifying restricting access to a public street for one user versus another user. I think that this is obviously a great example of designing code in action and changing over time. And while I certainly sympathize with the residents of the North Creek Seventh Edition, I don't think it's within our purview to restrict the North Creek Edition and this particular special permit any further than seeing as they're already meeting, substantially meeting the requirements of the City of Lincoln in terms of the new development. So I'll be supporting the motion.
I will be voting against the motion. I understand and agree with many of the things that my colleagues have mentioned. With, within the CUP guidelines, you know, the idea is to permit this creative design of a neighborhood and ensure that we can have these infill projects that are very important moving forward. And I certainly have an appreciation for that. I, my, my concern is with regard to the existing residents of the surrounding neighborhoods. And that is one of our, one of our charges as well, is to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the existing residents of those neighborhoods. And I appreciate their concerns. This neighborhood has been there for more than 15 years. And I certainly understand that times do change. But, you know, fourplexes in a neighborhood that doesn't have any fourplexes and the challenges in the parking that have changed sway my decision.
This is a tough site for an infill project and quite a change from what was initially thought to be put in there. And so it makes it a tough decision for me, too. One thing that I think about is if we continued the same type of development on the opposite side of that Telluride Circle, how many units would they put in there? And then how many curb cuts would that be? And what would parking look like then? And I think that that would still be an issue with on-street parking. So for that reason, I'm going to go ahead and support this because I think that any alternative, we would still have parking struggles. And I'm hoping that because this developer is actually adding some space on that enlarged width for Kokomo Drive there, that the new developer, this new development, will be lenient when it comes to allowing residents not in the development park on that wider street to help alleviate some of these problems. So I will support this particular application. Jerry?
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of Special Permit 20008. And again, this is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
No.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to one.
Okay, I think we're right on time here.
Okay, so the next three items are associated items, and I will be calling these together, public hearing. First one is Item 6.1A, Annexation 20004 to Annex Approximately 14.7 Acres and Adjacent Rights of Way. The Associated Change of Zone from A G to B2. And the Associated Use Permit 20003 to Allow Up To 120 Square Feet of Commercial Uses and Up To 120 Multifamily Dwellings Within The B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District With Waivers To Allow Shared Parking, Adjust The Parking Rate To One Space Per 300 Square Feet Of Floor Area For All Commercial Uses, Adjust Setbacks, Allow Light Trespass Across Lot Lines, And Allow Sanitary Sewer To Flow Opposite Street Grade. All Generally Located At South 70th Street And Yankee Hill Road. Staff Recommendation For The Annexation Is Conditional Approval. Staff Recommendation For The Change Of Zone Is Approval. And Staff Recommendation For The Use Permit Is Conditional Approval. Are There Any Exparté Communications To Be Disclosed?
Yes. I have an acquaintance, friend, that lives in the nearby development and approached me, asked me questions, and I answered some of them, but also forwarded some of them to planning staff.
Noted. Are There Any Exparté Communications That Took Place Or Additional Information You Learned While Visiting The Site?
I don't see any. All right. Steve?
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, filling in for Brian Will. Start with what we have on the overhead here, which is just generally to give an idea of what is around this particular site. This is an application for both an annexation, change of zone, and a use permit for 120,000 square feet of commercial space and 120 apartments. The area of the application is shown in green. 70th Street is to the east. Yankee Hill Road is to the south. The developer made road improvements at both Bridle Lane, which is just on the north, and over on the west edge on 67th Street, which is part of a previous annexation agreement. The city has constructed a roundabout as part of the Yankee Hill Road Improvement Project. To the west of this particular proposed commercial mixed-use development is an existing church site. There's also some townhomes and an approved multifamily project that was approved for elderly or retirement housing. And way on the west edge, you can see is Wy Song Elementary. The rest of the lots in this particular area have been developed with single-family detached uses. There is some green space detention area that's immediately to the north. This application, both in terms of the annexation, change of zone, staff has recommended approval. It's in performance of comprehensive plan in that the site plan provides both some neighborhood commercial uses for this area, but it also provides a mix of uses by having multifamily immediately above the commercial uses. The site slopes from the west down to the east on 70th Street, so that allows some over-under type of arrangements. They do have adequate enough parking that they have shown on the site to meet the required parking dimensions. And so this is really the kind of project that was envisioned for this area, both in that it was shown commercial as well as that it provides a mix of uses. Lincoln Transportation and Utilities reviewed it in terms of the traffic impact with the overall development and didn't determine that any additional traffic improvements were necessary because the developer had already made the prearranged improvements. Bob Simmering is here. If you have any additional questions about the transportation improvements, but otherwise, we have recommended approval.
Questions for Steve?
The pipeline, can you touch briefly on the pipeline issues or the?
Sure.
And show exactly where it is? Okay.
Thank you, I didn't mention that in my presentation. So, yes, the pipeline planning area, the 200-foot area that we recommend you not have any residential uses on, is right along the north side of Yankee Hill Road. And so there is a note that notes these two lots, seven and eight, which are basically looked at as one-story pad sites. Would not have any residential uses, daycare, that type of thing as well. Then most of the rest of the pipeline planning area is shown for parking. So any of the additional commercial buildings which might have residential above are well outside of that pipeline planning area.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking about that.
So it's a little unclear to me, you know, when we're looking at this site plan here, it looks like some commercial, is it, is it commercial with residential above it? Is it, it's not just straight apartment buildings? Can you elaborate a little bit on kind of what the, at least preliminary plan is right now?
Well, the applicant could talk a little bit more about their specific plans, but just in a general sense, this is meant to be the conceptual plan. So in almost every one of these cases, in my experience, it doesn't end up looking exactly like this. We did actually recently change with the B2 to allow first-floor residential uses. So potentially, based on their market demand, you might see some of these buildings where they have commercial plan for the first floor, but ultimately, it ends up being residential the entire way. So they would have that flexibility. You know, potentially, they could do fewer dwelling units if there was a much more, a higher commercial demand for this, or less commercial, and go right up to the 120 units.
And I might need to have Bob Simmering come out to ask, to answer this question. But is there much of a traffic volume difference between commercial uses and apartment uses on a site such as this?
Well, Bob has been patiently waiting for this, so we'll let Bob come out and answer that one as well.
And while he's coming, I'll just ask a quick question. There was, I believe we got some comments on water pressure and flow and those kinds of things. Are, I mean, has there been any kind of review of water issues in this particular area?
I'll have Bob address that as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Bob Simmering, L T U?
Can you tell me about traffic volume differences when it's, say, commercial, you know, stores versus apartments?
Well, the complication there is the type of commercial will change the traffic patterns greatly. Medical's quite high, you know, other things are much lower. In most cases, we, if we look at just an average type of commercial. In most cases, we, if we look at just an average type of commercial, there isn't a great variation between what the residential would kick out of there, and particularly, what we look at is peak hours, the critical time. So this whole area was designed with that in mind, and that's why the intersections have the long-turn lanes and left-turn lanes as well. So the concept originally was that there would be commercial there, and it's been addressed as far as what we think is necessary in the traffic issues.
Okay. I know the traffic issues that I was made aware of is they are concerned that people are going to try and cut through the neighborhood, and I don't know the exact street name. I know Steve had a picture of the overall area with, like, the Wy Song School on there and all the other stuff.
It's Bridle Lane that comes out.
I, that's not the one I'm, I want the one that heads more north.
That's Blanchard.
Nope. So go over on the, on the other side, so the east side, right above the, keep going.
Above the development.
Yeah. One more. Yeah, that street there. I know that there's concerns that people are going to take that street all the way over then, or potentially the one right next to it. Was that thought of during this development at all? I mean, how do we discourage vehicles from taking that way out of the development instead of taking, say, 70th Street or Yankee Hill?
Obviously, the biggest deterrent is it's a 27-foot wide street with parking on both sides, and as you heard in the previous hearing, that makes it harder to drive in and out. You can't go fast, whereas on 70th and Yankee Hill Road, you can go 45 miles per hour.
In your experience, do you see many people try to cut through the neighborhood, or do you think they will, you know, go to the, to the major streets?
I never try to predict what another driver will do.
[laughing].
I, I don't, I mean, obviously, somebody will think that's a shortcut and go there, but I can't imagine that someone, most people think in terms of time, not in distance.
Okay. Water pressure.
Yes. We, we received some concerns from someone who wrote in and talked a little bit about challenges in this area already with regard to water pressure and flow availability, and just wanted some comments on how you see this type of development affecting that.
Well, I don't think that, I can't imagine that adding this little bit in would change the impact that they're finding out there. At this point, our water system does monitor those things. When there are connections made through to the redundancy system, where they tie into the larger mains, that does improve those issues as well. So I think as everything develops around this, they should probably find some of those issues alleviated as well.
Thank you. Would any of those water issues, I know some of them, they talked about, you know, the size of the, the connection from, you know, the city to the public. Would any of that be, like, the individual house connecting in as well and the sizing there?
Well, it could be. You know, if they have a one-inch service versus a three-quarter inch, there's definitely an impact that the user would find.
Okay. Other questions for Bob right now? Do we have any other questions for Steve? No?
No.
Okay, so we're ready for the applicant.
Nate Burnett, REA Engineering, 601 Old Chaney Road. First, I just want to thank planning staff. Brian Will has been absolutely great to work with, Steve, L-T-U. This project has been something that Riga and Hamptons have been working on for 18 months, and we're excited to finally be here today. And so today, I'm here on behalf of Hampton Enterprises. As Steve mentioned, there's, this is the northwest corner of South 70th and Yankee Hill. We have eight proposed lots. Currently, the highlighted lots, two, three, five, and six, are shown for proposed commercial as well as for multifamily. To answer one of the questions, yes, the residential would be second floor and up. Shimmers has been working as architect on the project, and I'm just going to show some elevation views that they've had. What we are thinking is that this first picture will be a view of the anchor tenant. This could be a, a small grocery store, maybe like Aldi's or a Fresh Time. The second one that I'll show is of the mixed-use area. And then lastly, the proposed retail. So again, this is the, this is the anchor. This would be mixed-use. And then lastly, kind of that retail corridor. As Steve mentioned, this site has many justifications. We've got the 2040 Comp Plan Tier 1. This was in the 2040 Comp Plan, shown as proposed commercial. I've highlighted here kind of that corner, showing that as commercial. In addition, as has been discussed, the site has two major arterials, South 70th and Yankee Hill Road. That's both from the access management policy. In addition, on the east side of the site, is a future bike trail that we've been coordinating with the Parks Department. And so having both commercial and residential, we feel, would be very beneficial with that bike trail there on the west side of South 70th Street. On March 18th, we were going to have a public hearing on, in person, but with the safety concerns that had got postponed, and we had a Zoom neighborhood meeting last Tuesday. We felt it went very well. It was hosted by Hamptons. We had 28 different households or individuals log in, so we thought, for what it ended up being, that it was very well attended. And I would like to just address a, a few of the concerns that got brought up, and some of them have already been brought up. Traffic, again, we've got the access to two major arterials, Chatsworth, South 68th, as well as Bridle. They are all the commercial width. They have the wa, the rider, wider right-of-way, 66 feet, and then the pavement at 35, and then it transitions to the west to 27 feet as you go into the residential neighborhoods. One of the things that had gotten brought up was some of the neighbors were okay with commercial, knowing that was probably there, but were against the 120 apartments. And so since last week, we had FHU, who's a local traffic consultant, run some quick analysis for us, and we based the analysis, we have approximately 600 parking stalls, and so based on the 1 to 300 that's being asked, we could get 180,000 square feet of commercial. And so option one was all commercial, 180,000 square feet, and option two is what we have proposed, 120,000 with the 120 apartment units. And so what we found is option two is what's being proposed, and so not only are we not increasing the amount of traffic, traffic, we're actually decreasing in the peak hour. So we have, so option one is all commercial, 629 average. Second is what's proposed, 587. So we have actual less traffic with what's proposed than all commercial. Water pressure, we'd reached out to Dave Byersdorf, head of Water Department. He ran some, he gave us some pressure tests in the area. The average in this area, 65 to 70 PSI. Normal operating range for CDO Lincoln is 40 to 100. So we're essentially in the average. He did point out that there is significant elevation change even across our site. As you head further, further west, it's even higher. And so some of the concerns about water pressure may be from those residents who live at a higher elevation. He noted that, that change of 40 feet in the area further west could reduce their pressure from 65 to 70 down to 50, and so that might be a concern. But as far as our development impacting their properties, we don't have any concerns. There were some waivers. They're, they're fairly standard, so with that, I'd open up for any questions.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Nate, thanks for coming out today. I am very excited about this, this project. Could you tell me, the retail aspect that you touched base on that doesn't have housing above it, would it be fair to say that, that retail component may have the, the feel of Hampton's development at 84th and Glen Oaks, where the Sebastian stable is? That, that sort of retail feel, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, we think there could, there'll definitely be probably some sit-down restaurants, maybe coffee, kind of like Rockin' Joe's, you know, potentially a bank. So it, we definitely feel it'd have that Glen Oaks feel to it.
Okay. And then are we, do you think that we would be looking at more traditional office space then on potential first-floor active use for those mixed-use buildings, or, or more retail use, or, hey, let's see who comes along?
I think it's the latter.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see who comes along.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thanks, Nate.
I was going to ask something very similar to Tom. It was reminding me of, when you showed me the picture of more along the lines of, like, the Fallbrook, where they kind of have the, the main street, or more along the lines of, and I don't know the name of this development at all, but South 27th, down there by, I think it might be Yankee Hill. Tom's shooting paper clips at me up here. Non-intentionally, I do believe, but I'm not sure. Is that kind of, like, you're kind of looking for that main street feel?
They definitely do want that, and, you know, as part of the, the permit here, this kind of cross-hatched area here, as part of that kind of main feel, you know, that, we're kind of designating that as potential for farmer markets, outdoor events. So that's definitely, you know, kind of that main street with this being private drive, having some parking there, residential. And I would like to just point out, as far as the residential, we're showing 133 parking stalls below these potential buildings, 120 apartments. So we have at least one stall for every apartment, so parking shouldn't be an issue.
And when you say below, I just want to make sure I'm understanding underground parking underneath the building?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Other questions for? Okay. Thank you. Do we have any testimony and support back there? No? Testimony in opposition? No? Staff questions?
No.
No? Applicant rebuttal? He says he's good. Okay, well?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second, Edgerton.
He's so quick.
Jerry?
Okay. All right. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I think we have to take these.
Yes, we need separate motions, please.
Separate motions. So I would move that we approve annexation 20004 at this time.
I'll second, Beckyus.
And if you want to discuss all at once, that's fine.
Sure. I, I think I'll just go ahead and discuss primarily the, our last vote here, but, you know, I think that this is an exciting potential project here at the corner of 70th and Yankee. You know, we've seen in our community some mixed-use developments largely centered around commercial, and then some multifamily abutting it. We have a few instances outside of the, the downtown core of living units above commercial, but this, I think, will really be a very substantial use of living units above commercial/office and a B-2 use, and I'm pretty excited to see it. I am very supportive of this, this project. I think it fits well within the existing neighborhood, but yet still allows the opportunity for some neighborhood services and stores, as well as really pushing the density out in our suburban area, too. So I'll be supporting the project.
Anyone else? I think that a lot of times when, my understanding is that neighbors have been told this was going to be a commercial project, and so commercial can mean a lot of different things to different people. It can mean offices, it can mean retail, and so this one, I think, kind of took the neighbors by surprise, because they're hearing apartments, and they're probably envisioning a large apartment complex, and that is contrary to what they thought when they were buying their lots and building their homes. So this is kind of a, a mixed-use where it's going to be a little bit of both. I think the applicant for sharing those parking, well, not only parking, but the, the traffic numbers with us, because that, I, I hope alleviates a lot of concern for the adjacent neighborhoods and how this will be affecting their street volumes. I think this should be a nice little neighborhood complex, and hopefully, the, the development will hold some community events like a farmer's market, because that always helps, too. Jerry?
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of annexation 20004. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I move approval of change of zone 20005, from A-G to B-2.
Second, Ryman Yost.
Okay.
Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I would move approval of use permit 20003.
Second, Edgerton.
Last chance for comments. Okay, Jerry?
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of use permit 20003. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Um, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda has been suspended until further notice, but I do have one. Hopefully, they're watching. Dean and Dennis, we miss you at our, at our hearings, but, so a lot, just to let you know, we're thinking about you guys out there.
And Shams.
And Shams.
And Shams, but she was here last week, so I'm sure she'll be back. And I do want to say that the April 29th, so our next Planning Commission hearing, is canceled due to the current health measures being taken by the City of Lincoln as a result of COVID-19, so we won't be back until May, and I would call for a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second, Beckyus.
Jerry?
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
All right, we are adjourned.